I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call order roll call. Whoops. Time out. You're changing enough on me tonight. We're gonna get out of our normal format for just a second here. We have a couple of special guests here tonight. Our, their names Pat Johnson and Debbie Walker. We, they both just retired. I'm sure most of you know that. They're head librarian or assistant librarian. Debbie's been with us for thirty-three years. Pat's been with us for twenty-six when they retired. Now you two come on up. They've been a very, very important part of this community for all those years. They've done many services above and beyond what they were ever hired to do or what they were ever asked to do. They took it upon theirself to deliver books to people that are stuck at home, their little kids, to schools, for all kinds of things. It's a, just a amazing fact, this community has many, many employees just like this that have been here for years that go unrecognized for years, years, years. And it's just a shame that these two didn't want to make party. But, and for yous that don't know, one of them's my sister. You can guess what you want to do. But, we have, we've been very blessed in this community. We have employees like this throughout the community here at City Hall, down at Public Works, all over. They've been here for years. They know what our citizens need. They do what our citizens need without being asked. It's just a shame to lose these two both right now. I'd like to see them stay a little bit longer. I only had to work with them for eleven years. Cheryl's been working with them for many more years. I mean, many of the people have. But, it's just truly been a blessing in our community for what they have provided. I'm sure my sister's having a hard time believing I'm saying this. But it's the truth. She was there long before I was here. She'd been doing great things in this community. Pat's come up with many wonderful ideas for our library. Our new librarian that we fired has got some big, big shoes to fill. It's gonna be a big job for him. They've both been gone now. Debbie left first day. Pat left last day. Called the very last day. So they've had a little time off. Are you enjoying yourself?
Yeah.
You don't want to get missed here.
Well, I still see you.
So, from all the staff, and I'm speaking for all the community, thank you very much for all the years of service you two have provided. It's been, it's been a wonderful journey with you two that I've been here. Let's give this a big round of applause. Either one of you want to say anything quick? It's your opportunity. You can do it off the chest if you want.
It was a good ride. Yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone, you know, all our library patrons. They were great. We've learned a lot from them. They learn from us. And it's been a wonderful experience. And I've enjoyed working with everyone here. So, thank you so much.
I think you want to ask him a picture please. Hold him up.
Bring him up.
Yep. Porta bando. Not that funny, Mark. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll try to get back into our regular scheduled program now. Call order roll call started on my right.
Councilperson Josh Earn.
Councilperson Brenn Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Councilperson Craig Anderson.
Councilperson Jared Myel.
We're looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have anything over there, anything else? Nothing? Anything from the table you want to have there taken away? Thank you ladies. Alright, I'm looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Approve through them quick and see if they need your approval.
I'll move to approve that too.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. That takes us to finance and budget. We've got the accounts payable with the additional listing there. Any questions, direct to Administrator Schimmel.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also carries. That'll take us to motions and general business. And the first item under general business tonight is conditional use permit, permits Rogers Tree Service and Auto. As applied for conditional use permit to operate a buy, sell, trade business at one oh three twentieth street northeast and also for conditional use permit to install a fence. Roger purchased the old Bobcat building and as you know, has been bringing in miscellaneous items for storage or sale. The city has been communicating with him since early January. Calls started coming in regarding type of business he is operating. He has now submitted an application for two conditional use permits. One would be a buy, sell, trade business and the others for a six-foot chain link fence with screen. There are several options to be considered. One option is to deny this type of business due to quote junk or salvage unquote state of the items he is storing inside and out. This type of business would be allowed in the M-one light manufacturing district under conditional use permit. The buy, sell, trade is not very specific and leaves it wide open for becoming a buying station for perhaps a salvage yard. Another option is to allow this type of business but required to screen fence behind them six feet. He is suggesting we'd recommend at least ten to twelve feet high. This will conceal what is inside. But, again, then we would be allowing just about anything to be placed inside there. He has received his license from the state of Minnesota to operate the vehicle sales, which should also always be in working condition. Please remember that denying the application is not denying any reasonable use of his property. Planning Commission held a public hearing on May seventh. I imagine many of you were there and are recommending denying the two conditional use permits. We have all those meds in our packet. So the council action tonight has requested us to approve or deny the conditional use permit. Do we have a motion?
Well, I know what's gonna step up. Everything I've seen on this, obviously I wasn't at the other meeting, but I talked to people that were there. I've gotten more emails on this in five years on the council than I have on anything else. And that includes taking somebody's property from them to put a screen through, which is insane to me. I don't understand why everything's so vague. So, and obviously I've got some questions. I'm not saying that I can't go through down the road, but right now I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other questions, discussion?
I just, again, I, I don't know if Administrator Engle is here or not, but I just want to go on record for it again. I always try to make it a point that if I'm gonna go against somebody's wishes, I want to make sure they understand where I'm coming from on it. And a lot of it is, we've, we've approved other used car sales issues and this looks completely different. And I'm just confused on why this is so different and seems so secretive. It seems so odd. And it's really generating a lot of negative negativity in the community in such a relatively short period of time, four months. So, that's where I'm coming from. So it's on, in the record.
I have to concur with Craig on that. It's a pretty wide open deal when you start just saying buy, sell, trade. If it's buy, sell, trade vehicles, that's one thing. If it's buy, sell, trade cattle, that's one thing. But if I'm, I've done a little buying, selling and trading in my life too, and I know about what can go on. So, I'm gonna go on record too that it's just, it's way too wide open of a deal. And six-foot fence, even a six-foot fence would not be high enough coming into town over that knob to conceal some of the stuff that people are concerned about.
Well frankly, even if you put a twenty-foot fence over, then you're cutting off the view of anything behind it, going for the other stores.
Any other discussion? We have a motion. Did you second it?
Yep.
We have a second. And then we've all looked through all the minutes. And then call for a vote. All in favor of denying? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next. And now you're all welcome to stay. You're all welcome leave, whatever you want to do.
Oh, come on. Really? What else are you gonna do tonight?
Tonight anniversary.
Send it here. Find a more unique story than that.
Next, under motions and general business, conditional use permit fence Sanco Bobcat. Sanco Bobcat submitted application for conditional use permit in order to install perimeter fence. They have a mapping here in front of us. The fence will be a six chain link on east, west and south property lines. Gates will be installed on the east and west segments. This fence is needed for security. The adjoining property owners have been notified regarding the fence. The planning commission also held a public hearing on May seventh and they are recommending approval on this one. So we're looking for a motion on this fence permit.
The only thing that got brought up at the public hearing about this was a concern for the farmer that has to access that. But whoever was here representing Sanco Bobcat said that they have any communication with the farmer. His offense will be, they have to drive through that fence to get the equipment through, or the gate.
And I think Kenny has been in communication with them. So, yeah.
That was the only, that was a...
They gotta make enough for him to get through.
They're putting a gate in both sides.
They're gonna have to.
And that's not an issue then? They're willing to work with them and that...
They said there was no other, there was nothing. They just said they've been in contact with the farmer and he's aware of it and they're working with them.
The neighboring businesses done the same, Mark. I know there's only one other business out there.
Nope. Nope. No issues.
Alright, motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
We have a second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, under motions and general business, another fence permit. Chad Rootsmoak, Old Niners South Committee, submitted an application for conditional use permit in order to install a fence around his property in B-one commercial district. He has dogs and would like to build a six-foot privacy fence. The planning commission held a public hearing on the seventh and I recommend approval.
The only, there was some concerns, not really concerns, but the neighbors were here, I don't know if they're here tonight, but about the property lines. But, this Chad was his name. He wasn't here that night. But the neighbors are working with them because they're not sure on the property lines. They were gonna work it out. And Cheryl said she'd help them when they got closer. Is that alright, summary? So neighbors have no issue with the fence. They're just concerned on the property lines set up from this drawing and the fence. And they're willing to work with him to get this fence done and possibly sell him some land and make sure it gets done.
Alright. Does anything have to be added, like if we want to ensure that he actually does meet with them? Like when we, if we do approve it, do you have to add anything, any word, verbiage in there about that?
No, because you're just approving the fence can be placed in the B-two or B-one area. And then I will work with them. We want to issue the permit once they all agree.
Was there any issue brought up about the distance between the fence and the deck? I mean, just the way it's drawn and obviously it's not gonna be the scale, but it's not marked out how far, how that is.
Yeah, no. He moved it closer to the deck. So Pete Freiber lives on that side of the street and his driveway is right close to that property line. So Chad was willing to move it over so that there was some room for snow removal and stuff. So that's why it's kinda odd there. Otherwise, the city does prefer that it's right on the property line.
Alright.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next item is Homestead County Agreement. Tatcha Finianal Equipment Agreement is submitted by Homestead County. This agreement covers equipment and indoor operator if the city would need to use them. Public Works Director Hamels recommends approval of the contract. So the motion would be to approve or deny the contract.
It's pretty much the same one as we've had the last few years, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Slight increase.
Like usual.
When do they need, is there like a certain time, like?
We, the only time we would ever use it is if it's a natural disaster emergency. Otherwise, we...
You mean like a whole winter?
And then we cut music because it was timeout.
But yeah, I mean, if a storm came through, wind damage, we need to just be there to, it's a backup deal, but it is.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also carries. Next item, the following ordinance language. This is the ordinance amendment section two twenty park board. The following ordinance language was agreed upon with the park board. These are mostly housekeeping items. The last update was completed in two thousand three. And we had the first reading on April twenty-third, so this is the second reading. City Council asked for the question to approve ordinance two thousand nineteen dash two, amending section two twenty of the park board. And I'm not gonna read through the whole ordinance. It's there for you. So, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the ordinance change. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
We have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Liquor license transfers, the next. Strikers requesting to utilize Minnesota State Statute three forty-eight dot four oh four seven dot four to sell intoxicated liquor at the civic center on May fourth.
Is that not right? Or may, I'm sorry. Well, isn't it?
Yeah.
It says May fourth, it's already the thirteenth?
Oh, I think it's June fourth.
Okay.
Or July fourth or something like that. Yeah, I think it's June fourth.
Okay, the council actually requested to authorize strikers to utilize Minnesota Statute three forty-eight dot four oh four seven dot four to sell intoxicated liquor at the civic center. And we get, correct the date, subject to proper application. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also carries. That takes a great amount of motions and general business. Takes us to mayor staff and assault reports. See you, Mark. I got a short mayor's report and I got a little something else. I gotta read you into the record here. City Sturfield would like to send her sympathies to the family of Patricia Emerson, Terrence Sweska, Veda Logan, Paul Zimbrich, Don and Darlene Meskey, and then June Meskey, Martha Lee, Alice Wilbur, and honorary mayor of Simpson, Walter Griffin. Storm is coming. If you remember, they come, that storm comes every year, July fifteenth through nineteenth. It's a group of young people. You can use this group to help with painting, yard work, minor construction, house cleaning, almost anything you need. You can get signed up for this by calling Renee Wilson at two six one five four one three, sponsored by the Sturfield United Methodist Church. I'll give you a quick little read from one of the students of the month. She was a student of the month, November two thousand eighteen, Sydney Clausen. They were asked, one of the questions they were asked was to identify one aspect of the community or school that you feel is outstanding feature and explain why. And remember, she was asked for one aspect. One aspect of the community Sturfield, I believe, is an outstanding feature is a small, close knit field this community radiates. The opportunity Sturfield provides to its citizens, especially its developing children and teens, is unparalleled. Within the town of Sturfield, there are many public facilities that are unexpected for a community of roughly six thousand people. They have the aquatic center, the library, the schools, various parks around town. Show the dedication the city has to providing opportunities to all the citizens. Throughout my time in high school, I have been given chances to do many things that would not be possible if I live in Sturfield, excuse me, if I live in a town of a bigger size that does not value the education like Sturfield does. I have had the chance to gain many experiences, such as shadowing a pathologist at the Mayo Clinic this past summer through the Mayo mentorship program. This was only possible because I live in a community that values the importance of education and obtain a high school, attended a high school that prioritizes the success of the students post-graduation. Although the town is small in size, it is anything but small in character. In Sturfield, you will meet people from all walks of life, benefices, proceed easily. People of all ages are able to benefit from making new friends, learning all the different perspectives. Even with having such a diverse culture, Sturfield is a safe town that people can feel extremely secure living in. Overall, I would say Sturfield's small, close knit community makes it an outstanding town for all the citizens. They only asked her for one. Just imagine if they'd asked her for a couple. I think she hit it pretty low right on the head.
Yeah, it's neat to see the youth of our community look at a lot of attributes we have and benefits we have here as a quality life, so.
So I'd like to thank Sydney for that. I'd like to thank all the graduating seniors and wish them success. We've got, coming right up, we're gonna send another class out into the world and let them know about Sturfield, so good luck to all them. That's my report, city administrator's report.
Uh, report's in your packet. And I really only got one thing to highlight, and that's, um, this Thursday night, we have the special meeting, the Thursday afternoon, to hopefully proceed with the CIP project for this coming here.
What time's that at again, Bill?
Four forty-five. Uh, right here.
Four forty-five, right here. Alright. Any other questions for the administrator? Thanks, Bill. Finance director, you wanna fill that in?
Um, just that we've met with the auditor and we had a phone conference with our financial advisor. So they've continued saying that they'll keep working with us as we work through our whole, you know, transition process here. So, if there's any questions that you have, they said forward those to us staff folks and we'll get them forwarded. Otherwise, we'll keep working together and they'll keep working together with us too.
Alright. Any questions on finance director? Thanks, Bill. Public Works Director, Sean.
Uh, the only one, and other than what's on the report, there is, this is the time of year that the guys will be getting restless with the, we're shorthanded until the summer help comes on. So some of our parks could be, get a little long for a week because we just don't have the manpower to, obviously with the sweat spring too, everything got pushed back. So, we've got a ton of things we gotta get accomplished. And in a couple of weeks, when we have the full summer help staff here, we will get them back into what our expectations would be.
Alright. Any questions or comments for public works? Yeah, you guys melt sunshine, you better have your hands full, so. Keep them, keep them rolling.
Only for another day.
They're doing a good job. Well, you gotta get a lot done every day.
Just kidding.
Where you get your done. Thanks, Sean. Tell the guys thanks. City engineers report.
Um, pending on what happens at the special meeting Thursday, we do already have our pre-construction meeting scheduled for Friday, the twenty-fourth. Um, and depending on contracts and getting everything signed and in place, the contractor will likely start on May twenty-eighth.
You said that would be the public meeting, would be the twenty-fourth?
No, our pre-construction meeting would be the twenty-fourth. Our public meeting would be on the twenty-ninth. So they might start reclaiming or mobilizing things in before we actually meet with the neighborhood.
Well, they'll make a mess.
That will be in the letter.
Oh, okay. Alright.
You all are welcome to attend that too. For those that haven't been here for one, feel free to stick your head in. It's kind of an open house, come and go atmosphere. We have the maps laid out. And then, um, the citizens can meet with the engineers, inspector and the contractor, get to know them, and then ask any of us questions they might have, so.
One other thing I want to bring up in the engineer's report, we're gonna be getting right back into the busy part of the year again. And, I know, I think for the next few months again, we should start having Jenna give us updates and stuff. I know it's, there's a little upcharge to that, but I think at the means, it'd be very beneficial to the rest of us to know where we're at on some of these projects and things like that. I don't know what the rest of you think. I think it does cost us a little extra. What is it?
I charge you for an hour a month.
Yeah, hour a month.
Thirty-eight hundred bucks?
So I just, I want, I want, I want to put that on record. I think during this construction season, we need to at least try that again too. I think.
Yeah.
Most of the staff to give us a little more of an update once in a while and stuff.
Jenna, how did the walkthroughs go through? Cool, cool.
The walkthrough went pretty well. Um, there's some concrete that needed to be fixed, just like every other year. Not any more than normal or less than normal. Um, this sod took really well, um, the late dormant. Um, they had a few places to fill in some dirt, but it actually looked better than normal.
No settling in the street, which was a big...
No settling in the street. Um, the litter course is now on, so manholes and valves have all been adjusted up. And the wearings been paved, so.
Alright.
We'll, um, we'll take you down the finished streets when we do the street tour, which we're trying to look ahead here a little bit, so we hopefully can gauge some nice weather. So we'll try to do some polling here with you to get some dates to work out, probably midweek again, that four-thirty to six-thirty timeframe, so.
Alright. You get to go on our map, get the date on again. Thank you, Jenna. The library director, no one's not here tonight, but he is in town.
Yeah, Nate started on Monday and he said he'll rotate with, um, Fire Chief Swisher on doing the monthly report, um, updates for you all, so.
Alright, good deal. Get over to library if you have any questions. He's going there every day right now, I think.
Yeah, yep. Just met him today.
Fire Chief Vance, you got a report? We ain't seen you in a while.
Oh, yeah, I've been hiding out, so. Between kids and families, father and all that stuff, so. Uh, monthly report is getting put together, so as you guys recall, starting in January, I've done a monthly report. I'm still gathering some data. I think Angel, he actually borrowed some of my run reports, so I gotta talk to her about getting my numbers back. Uh, but that, we'll be ready for the next meeting. I'll get that to Cheryl and she'll have that in the packet for you for next meeting. Uh, but just a quick overview of what we've been doing. Uh, we did put on two new junior firefighters last month. Uh, Jake Petrick and Hunter Olson have been added to the department as junior firefighters. So they will be the second and third junior firefighter entering that new program we talked about about two years ago. So, uh, they're both sponsored by active members of the department. Uh, they're starting their second month now, so they're doing really well with that. Uh, the department is upgrading our EMS bags. Currently, we have kind of a hodgepodge of EMS bags across all apparatus. Uh, one of the items that the medical director and myself have been trying to do is standardized bags. So we have bought four sets of EMS bags that are exactly the same. So, the bags on all apparatus look exactly the same, set up exactly the same. So depending on which apparatus goes out, you don't have to remember which bags to grab. They'll be basically two sets of bags for each piece of the apparatus. Uh, we do have four positions open on the fire department. Uh, Cheryl and the city administration helped us get a note out on the city's Facebook page. We sent it out on our Facebook page. We've got between ten and fourteen applications. Uh, the executive board of the fire department will be interviewing them in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully with them starting sometime in July is what our goal is, to get them onboard in July. Uh, so we can kind of use most of summer to get them up to speed with some of the basic orientation stuff for the fire department. Uh, so I'll have more information on that if we go through the interviews of those individuals. Uh, we have some structure changes in the organization. Uh, with, we had an open lieutenant's position where the individual that held that position has retired from the fire department. Uh, we've also been looking at some long-term, kind of planning to be able to get, as some of our senior members are looking at retirement, not very close, but we want to get some of the younger members in leadership roles so that the senior members can venture them from the backseat. Uh, so we've got some officer changes. Uh, Mike Poudin has offered to step down as officer, as captain. Mike Poudin has been a captain with the department for the fourteen and a half years I've been here. Uh, Mike is stepping down to a motor operator or engineer's position. Uh, and we're going to promote Steve Denny up to captain to fill his slot. Steve is running most of daytime calls, so it's a good fit for him. What that allows us to do is move two more lieutenants up. So we're taking two more of our younger members. Brandon Dolman and Brent Meyer are moving from motor operator engineer for Brandon Dolman. Brent Meyer is moving from firefighter to lieutenant. So they will be running a shift. They each have a motor operator and two firefighters assigned to them for that. Uh, so they are moving into leadership roles, fire ground leadership roles, not leadership roles in the organization itself, the fire ground leadership roles. Uh, what else? I'll go back to that because that's gonna be more. Uh, you probably saw the ladder truck is out today. Uh, we were testing all our ground ladders. Were required to be, have those ground ladders tested annually, just to make sure that they're not failing and we don't get people up with footed by feet on ladders and breaks and bad things happen. Uh, we also had the ladder retested again to identify where some of the problems are with it to see if we can fix them again. So we've had it tested two years ago. I had it retested. Ryan Poudin, who's our chief engineer now, was there, so he's got great notes on what's going on with that ladder truck. Once again, the truck is forty-seven years old. It's just, it's getting to the end of its life. The department is looking at that, but they'll bring it back to you hopefully in the near future. Uh, the department is looking at installing mobile tablets in some of the frontline apparatus. Uh, if you remember, we talked in the past, we have I am responding so that we can kind of keep track where things at with our phones. with our phones, I am responding can also go to a mobile app inside the trucks, where we can actually see where all the other trucks are, so we actually get a map, we can see where they're at. Uh, Public Works, Sean actually got us all the hydrant information, so that's on there now, so as we're responding, we have a lot more data than we have even just a year ago, so we actually see where the hydrants are, so we stop and make our connection before we get there, see where the other trucks are coming, so we don't have interference with trucks intersection, crossing at the same time, and then we're also putting pre-plans on there, so the example is the new building's been built, Bobcats, Thermo King, Peterbilt, those are actually in the program where we bring up the floor plans, and actually look at the floor plans, where stuff is in the building before I, before we commit people into the building, or something like that, so, uh, we'll be putting mobile tablets in the trucks to be able to do that, plus it's gonna help us get to locations, as we're getting more and more members that ain't grown up on the farms around here know where all the spots are, we're relying more and more on the, on the GPS mapping to get where we need to go, so we'll have that in the trucks. And the final thing I've got is, a couple months ago, and it's probably been three months ago, uh, we did an employee engagement with the Sturfield Fire Department, we had a number of questions that we put out there, at the time we had thirty-three members, twenty-eight of the members responded to that survey, uh, we presented that survey back to the department last month, uh, and there were kind of four things that came up, uh, that the department members were wanting us to work on. A number of these we have already started working on with the leadership team, with the executive board and the officers, uh, but the four items that really came out of that employee engagement was accountability of members, uh, improved training capacity or training scenarios, communication among the department across the whole board, and then also the officers in leadership, some of the way that we're doing some of the management of the organization, you know, roles and responsibility, how those are developed. So we presented that in our May, April meeting, and we talked about it last night, about some strategies we're gonna use as a department to, to take, uh, take those issues and try to resolve all some of the concerns that were brought forward with that, so. Plan is, uh, we're gonna implement the changes that we talked about at the meeting last night, uh, letting go for six to twelve months, we'll redo the survey again, uh, just to be able to get some more feedback from people, so. It's also on the board.
Any questions for Chief? Only comment I have, I'd like to send a big thank you to your first responders, we personally got to use them two times in a row, two weeks in a row for my mother, they did a fantastic job, law enforcement was there also, they did a good job, I greatly appreciate it, and I expect cookies will be coming later.
Always.
She appreciates it too, and she's doing very well, so thank you.
Very good, thank you.
All right, that takes us to committee commissioners' board reports, team of commerce?
Got the C and R paperwork tomorrow night, on the baseball, we honor all the seniors there, and we need to put a little program on, tech.
All right, I'll see you there. EDA, HRA?
Meeting next Tuesday.
Yep, we got the CDA newsletter in there, as part of EDA, that's some of the EDA stuff there, if you wanna read through all the newsletters. Finance?
Nothing.
Nope, thanks for coming the other day, appreciate that.
Library?
Nothing right now, meet next week.
All right, Park Board?
Um, minutes from the April's meeting are in there, and we met again yesterday.
Anything we need to know out of there, you remember?
I don't know.
Personnel?
Not really.
Not just right yet, but that will be coming up, I'm sure. Planning zoning?
Minutes are in there.
We got all the minutes from the May 7th meeting. Public safety, we got the sheriff's newsletter in there, do you have any tonight, Mike?
No, well, um, the April call, calls for service, um, and notice that there was a discrepancy, there was only, first through the 11th in there, so it only showed a hundred and forty-five calls, so typically we average around four hundred, if it was a hundred and forty-five, that'd be questionable, but, um, so I'll get that amended report into the second meeting of the month. Uh, something I noticed, a lot of new guys in our department come around, um, we hired six, and I believe by the end of this week, we'll have six new guys on, patrol by themselves, solo, so. We've tried to get them in here, um, meet the staff, um, meet some public works guys, um, I had a few trainings out here as well, so, um, say hello to them, welcome to town. Um, and then in our newsletter, as you saw, Sergeant Steve Kazek, he retired, I believe it was twenty-nine years, so he's a familiar face, and he's around town here quite a bit. Um, as far as activities around town, we've, uh, we've been helping out at the school, we did a seatbelt challenge last week, that was featured on the front page in one of the newspapers, we also did a career day out there, and we had about forty-five students that were interested in law enforcement come and speak with myself and the training division, um, helping out with some five keys around town, um, and then, uh, we just got done with a distracted driving wave in Homestead County, um, we issued approximately over a hundred citations for use of the cell phone, uh, compounding, texting, reading, um, anything in that nature, violations, so just remember, come August 1st, there's gonna be a change in the law that handheld only, I'll remind you again coming up, but a good time to start practicing now is use of, use your handheld devices, um, or hand, unless-
Hands-free.
Hands-free, so your earplugs and mics or your stands in your car.
All right, any questions for Mike? All right, Public Works?
Um, now that we'll be back in that schedule, you'll start seeing minutes, uh, once a month from, from their meetings.
Proco?
Uh, minutes are in your packet, just bring your attention, for the public's benefit, to the Homestead County's Planning Department on their website, they talk about the long-range plans of the county, so if any citizens are interested, it's just easier to access their website for any of the categories any citizen may be interested in.
All right. Stu 180, nothing tonight. Transit Advisory Committee?
Nothing at this meeting, no.
Okay, under Communications tonight, we got the roster, Airport Master Plan is in there, and SMLM, January 31st minutes are also in there for you to look at. That'll take us to, my, city council welcomes and encourages participation from the community members, please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to the data privacy rules, which means no employee's name may be used. Please do not expect to access the council's meeting regarding your concerns, we also request that your comments be limited to four minutes, speakers be recognized only one time. At this time, we would ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up in the podium, state your name and address.
Motion to adjourn.
If no one wants to use the open mic, we'll go on to the final, which we have the motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?